So we're gonna go through, I'm gonna just give you guys a little overview of how we're going to do the forum. I do have a list of prepared questions. I will go through each question and I will give each person a chance to answer first. So we'll go one, two, three, four, and then come back down the other way for as many questions as we have time for. First, I'm going to give you each a one-minute chance to introduce yourselves and give a little history about yourself or why you are running for school board. And then I'll go ahead and I'll launch into my questions that I have here. You'll have two minutes to answer each question. And our lovely Morgan here will have your cue cards for one minute, 30 seconds, and 10 seconds to let us know what our time is looking like. So, alright, and I apologize to both of you. I'm going to need to have this microphone back to ask questions to get it picked up on the camera and the radio.
We'll share this one down.
Okay, perfect. I will make sure that we do this as smoothly as possible. So, with that said, I'm gonna let you go ahead and introduce yourself.
Hello, good afternoon. Good afternoon, everybody. I'm Hilary Kapastikoff, and I'm running for school board. I just wanted to take the time to... Thank you for coming here. I know this is really exciting, feeling like an underdog, being the youngest person here, running for something so vital to our community. I come from a very diverse background. I am actually from a village up north called English Bay, Hamwha. I grew up there, military 98, and I actually, you know, separated between both homes. So, for me, school wasn't very easy. And between both places, I found that the resources and information weren't as available as they are these days. And that's why I'd really like to advocate for kids who, you know, fell through the cracks, didn't really understand what choices they had. I personally fell through the cracks. Being one of those children, I obtained my GED because I got up to 11th grade, wasn't able to go back into K High, didn't know any other opportunity, and just decided to, you know, make what I had, make do with what I had. And I am a young parent.
Where are our one-minute phones?
A young parent to two girls, so they are currently enrolled in the school district. Very nervous for my youngest, being her first year. I didn't understand when I was getting my older daughter into education that I could be a part of it. And I would really like to see the community and everybody who advocates for all those kids to just share and be, you know, a part of this board.
We're gonna need to pass the microphone here.
Is this working?
Hi, is this on? Is it working? Okay. Some of you know me, some of you don't. My name is Leslie Becker. I'm a three-year resident here in Ketchikan. I was the former executive director of the Chamber of Commerce. I'm pleased to be the incumbent in this position. I was appointed to this position on April 24th of this year. I want to let you know what I believe in as a member of the board, that I have a fiduciary responsibility to be objective, unselfish, and impartial, responsible, honest and trustworthy, efficient but not expedient. I need to protect the public trust and always act for the good of the organization rather than the good of myself. Let me just let you know that I am a firm believer in public, that public education is the most important and precious seed, that the community can sow into the lives of our children. I believe it is our duty to actively engage in supporting the educational development of our kids, to guide them into being prepared, well-rounded, contributing adults who will carry on our legacy. And working with the board offers a wonderful opportunity to help guide policy, engage in strategic planning, and to work to appraise outcome results.
Am I out of the... Well, I guess I'm done.
Good afternoon, everybody. I'm Paul Robbins Jr., and pleased to be running for school board along with all these great candidates. And I appreciate your attention today and to have this forum to meet new people and introduce myself. I've been in Ketchikan for a little over three years now. And ever since I came here, I've been a little bit awestruck but also ecstatic about what a great community it is. And that's part of the reason I'm running here, is because I've always been personally involved in my child's education. I have a child at T-SAS currently. And I understand the importance of parents being involved and the community being involved in quality education. So, what better way to do that than to get myself involved on the school board? So, I'd be very pleased to serve on your behalf on the school board. And I don't have any grand agenda or plan for the school board, because I believe it's just my job, if I am elected, to work with the other team members based on the data we have and public input, to make the best decision possible for our kids.
Am I on? Okay, great. My name is Kathleen Yar, and I'm running for school board because I lost at Point Foss. And if I get it, I'll do a good job, but I'm certainly gonna vote for Hillary after listening to her talk today, because I think she'll do the best job. There are two issues facing us for this coming school year. One of them is hiring the superintendent, or not hiring her, not retaining her. The second is the budget. How are we going to make the dollars allocated to us work? I want you to know that I support suddenly these cuts to education. I think there's a lot of waste in education. For instance, we just hired two more administrators. Do we need that? You know, think about it. Does North Pointe County School need a vice principal? But coaching principle is probably something that should have happened a long time ago, because the hiring and firing practices in this district are really peculiar. Thank you.
Okay, hopefully this mic is working a little bit better now. I think I just have to get real friendly with it. So, this forum was open to the candidates for both the three-year position and the one-year position. You guys are all here for the one-year position. Bridget Matson was not able to be here with us but did prepare a statement. And Jordan is not able to be with us either, but I would like to read Bridget's statement just for your consideration. Says, "Thank you for the opportunity to speak at the chamber luncheon. I have a prior engagement with students at K High at the same time, and apologize for not being able to be present. My name is Bridget Matson, and I am just completing my one-year appointed term to the school board. I have learned a lot about our school district in the past year. I have been a part of transitioning the administration to our current superintendent, finalizing different contracts for employee groups in our district, the health insurance task force that has delved into health insurance options for our district employees, administrative hiring committees, policy committees, and the extremely important strategic planning crafting mission, and vision statements and setting goals and priorities for our school district with staff, students, and community members. Our district has undergone a lot of change in the past year. While I believe it is important to be aware of where we have been and learn lessons from the past, I believe it is even more important to be moving forward to the future we want to create. The KGB SD vision statement is that as members of this school district, we will educate and empower students to be leaders, critical thinkers, and problem solvers. We do this by working on our unified mission that together we foster academic excellence, meaningful connections, and a nurturing environment that combine to meet the unique potential of every student. I am thrilled to be a part of that as a member of the school board. One of the wonderful things about Ketchikan is the way that this community supports our youth. Through fundraisers, sponsorships, and vast amounts of volunteer time, we as a community show that our priority is investing in the youth as they develop their knowledge and skills. As a member of the school board, I am mindful that the decisions we make impact the kids in our school district and that our actions should reflect what is best for kids. As a mother of five, four still in school, who has lived in Ketchikan for 16 years, I am dedicated to continuing to serve the youth of this community. I am excited for the opportunity to serve on the school board for another three years and encourage you to vote. Our voices matter, and our children deserve a strong school district that is responsive and dedicated to fostering their successful futures." Okay, and with that, we're gonna go ahead and we're going to launch into our questions. And Hillary, since you started off with our introductions, Leslie, I'm going to ask you to be the first to answer this question. Our first question is, "Some voices, including the governor and certain members of the legislature, are considering cuts to K-12 education in 2020. What is your response? What will you personally do to respond to this difficult situation?" And everyone has two minutes, and Morgan's got the timer, and please don't make me cut you off. It makes me comfortable.
I would agree that there probably is an opportunity to look at our education expenditures in this community and across the state. I also think there's an opportunity to balance out the expenses that are incurred in our education system. We have an unincorporated district area issue, where people are not paying property taxes, and there are issues that put burdens back on the state that could be maybe leveled out. How those things are accomplished, I do not, I have not vetted those things through, but I am becoming educated on what those things can be. I am not a big believer in excessive government overreach. I do believe that communities can respond. But I don't, I do not have a specific answer for you on exactly what is appropriate for Ketchikan today, because I'm too new in the school board role. But I do believe we have some good leadership in place that is willing to make some tough decisions so that things that have maybe been misplaced, displaced, or inappropriately used can be more effectively applied in future budget years.
I think cuts to education is definitely something that should be analyzed. And I appreciate that the borough recently announced that the state's providing guidance on spending per pupil so that we can actually look into some of those measures. I don't, I don't have all the data on across-the-board cuts. I think as a school board, we primarily need to focus on what the budget is and what we can do with it. But there's real concerns by our taxpayers, which are also important stakeholders in the school board, on whether or not we are providing the appropriate value for the amount of dollars that are spent on Alaskan students. So, I think the importance here, when it comes to budgetary issues, is that the school board and all of our elected officials are as transparent as possible in trying to explaining, trying to explain the outputs of our education system and the costs that are associated with it. Because we have to be honest, costs here in Alaska are gonna be higher. You can't just look at the cost of education and say, "Well, we pay more than almost any other state." Well, of course we do. We're Alaska. Everything here is more expensive, and for, usually for a reason. So, I would just say the school board needs to remain focused on the budget that it has and making sure we get the maximum benefit from the limited resources we do have.
Could you please repeat the question?
Absolutely. "Some voices, including the governor and certain members of the legislature, are considering cuts to K-12 education in 2020. What is your response? What will you personally do to respond to this difficult situation?"
Well, I think what we need to do, can, am I on?
You're on.
Is to support the governor in his cuts, because he's looking for money anywhere that he can find it in the state budget so he can pay a full dividend which will stimulate the economy of the state. If everybody at this table had $3,000 more, somebody just said, was it you Hillary? You have five kids? How many kids?
That was Ms. Matson.
Oh, okay. So, $3,000 per kid and two, another two, $3,000 checks for the parents. That's a lot of money that would go into our state, and that would create an excellent economic stimulus. As far as the money in our own school district, some of it might go to help a district that's far away, like English Bay. Their expenses are really high. And you look at what they have to pay their teachers just to get somebody out there. They're hiring unqualified teachers because that's all they can get sometimes. At the rate that they are paying, they should be getting higher qualified teachers. And why we're hiring unqualified teachers is really beyond me. I think we lots of times want to spend down money on things that we don't need to spend it on. I go into classrooms in the school district and the walls are lined with curriculum, and it's just a big roar and waste. All you have to do is go on the Department of Education website and look at what the Alaska standards are. And if you're a good teacher, you just align your lesson plans with the Alaska standards, and you can use what you have. I think that we need to develop more public-private partnerships. And one thing that we could do is cut out this universal preschool except for special ed students. And even, we're not state mandated to send kids to school until age seven, so kindergarten could even go.
Okay, and Hillary, I'm gonna turn it over to you with your microphone here. I'm gonna step away from the podium for just one moment and try and get the music turned off outside. Sure, the 80's soundtrack is really inspiring.
Might be good for the camera.
Hillary, go ahead. Your turn.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Absolutely. "Some voices, including the governor and certain members of the legislature, are considering cuts to K-12 education in 2020. What is your response? What will you personally do to respond to this difficult situation?"
Let's see. Well, I definitely believe that we don't want to... I think... I think that we definitely do not want to have any sort of education cuts as, you know, students, depending where you're at. If you're, you know, anywhere between K to 12. But I believe that overviewing and seeing what needs to be, you know, what is extra to us? Like, what do we have that other places don't, that we can live without, you know? Definitely, like, as it was said, we are definitely gonna have higher costs, because we are in Alaska. And specifically for our community, we are an island. We have to get stuff farmed, shipped, flown. I believe that going over just the information of, you know, what we're spending and like going over the faculty again. And, I'm sorry, I'm really new to this, so I'm still learning as I go, but I would like to acknowledge that I'm very interested in this kind of involvement in our community. And I feel like we definitely need a lot of people of my generation to be involved in these kind of issues. I mean... Thank you.
Alright, so next question, we're gonna go ahead and we'll start off with Paul. "Ketchikan School Board Has Been Plagued By Resignations. Discuss Your Ability To Commit To Full Term. Have You Ever Resigned From Public Office Before Your Term Was Expired?"
Well, the short answer is no. I've never resigned from public office. I've never held public office. This would be my first time in public office. But I have held numerous positions within the community that I feel are somewhat equivalent. For example, for the past two years, I have been the commander of the Veterans of Foreign Wars here in Ketchikan, supporting the community in various ways, raising money for women in safe homes, for youth baseball, whatever we can within the program. It's part of my way of serving the community. It's what I've done all of my life, is serve the community from my time in the Marine Corps to now with the VFW or serving on the school board, hopefully. So, I can easily commit to the full year, possibly longer, if people think I'm doing a good job. I'm a Forest Service employee. I'm going to be here in Ketchikan for a good long time, because my wife and I have found a community and a school that we're really proud of, and our son loves it here. So, we're gonna be here as he goes through the school system. And since we're going to be here as he goes through the school system, I'm going to be an active part of it. Whether I'm elected or not, I'm gonna continue to be an active parent in our school system, and I absolutely will commit for the full year. Which way we're going?
We're going to Ketchikan.
Thanks. No, I've never resigned from a public office or a board or anything like that. Oh, wait a minute. That's a lie, because I did just resign from the Holy Name School Board about two weeks ago. But not, that's not a public board, so I'll make that distinction. As far as my commitment to this year, you know, I'm already gonna be gone for the month of October. I'm going to Budapest, where my daughter is teaching English as a second language. And so, you know, I'll, I'll, if, when I come back, I'll work on it, for sure. But I can affect the change that I'm interested in affecting off-board. I'm moving right now towards that.
Okay. So, the question again is, "Ketchikan School Board Has Been Plagued By Resignations. Discuss Your Ability To Commit To A Full Term. Have You Ever Resigned From Public Office Before Your Term Was Expired?"
So, no, I have never resigned from a public...
Public office.
Office. I have never resigned from a public position. I would like to note that whether elected or not, I will still continue to be running again for maybe another year term next year. I currently, I, actually, as of recently, I have been working two to three jobs for three years now. So, I'm very committed to staying with my community. I'm here for the long run. And as it was said, whether I get elected or not, I'm, you know, up for the challenges and continuing to learn, continuing to run. And... Sorry, I don't have very much more than that.
So, the question is, would I be willing to commit to the one-year term? The reason I'm voting, run, voting, I will vote for myself, but running for one-year term is because I've enjoyed this opportunity. It's been an honor and a privilege to be appointed into this position since April. It takes time to get up and running into this position. There's a lot of complexities, and you need to do a lot of research to make good decisions. But yes, I'm fully committed to the one-year term, and I would have considered a three-year term, but I am actually interested in possibly pursuing other public office opportunities in the community. And as I learn more, I want to have the freedom at the end of the term to do that. So, this would be my full-time commitment personally to support this role and continuing this. And I would be on day one a contributing member, because I already have a four-month history, and I'm engaged in the process with the board today.
Okay, so the next question, we'll go ahead and we'll start with Kathleen, so that everyone has a chance to answer first. "What Should Ketchikan Do To Strengthen Abuse Prevention And Responses To Accusations Of Abuse?"
I'm assuming you're primarily speaking about teachers who abuse students, given our history. Is that correct?
I was not the one who came up with the question.
The abuse prevention, okay. But it can, it can also be students abusing other students. And one of the ways it happens is through bullying. Bullying is very, very common in our schools, even though there's a lot of bullying prevention posters put up all over the walls. It still happens. Bullying manifests itself differently with girls. It can, bullying can take the form of just not talking to somebody, excluding them from activities, just kind of catty, snarky comments. As far as abuse, we need to follow the law and do our reporting as mandated in Alaska statutes. We're all mandated reporters. Anybody who's a certificated teacher is a mandated reporter. And that's not what happened in the incident with the culinary arts teacher. It was not handled properly. And the fact that that superintendent walked away with $53,000 of our dollars is just beyond the beyonds, in my opinion.
So, Hillary, we'll go back to you.
So, for abuse of, in general, I believe that we should have, for the kids, the bullying that, you know, as personally, being bullied younger, I didn't have a lot of advocates around me. I had my teachers, which were really great, but it wasn't enough for me to take the step further, to get action. So, I believe that if we have more advocates who reach out to kids, who constantly go to the schools to advocate for the positive environment and how bullying is not cool, as well as having training resources for teachers and faculty. I just believe that having the right resources in reach is gonna be something that will prevent this abusive cycle, not only for the children, but also for the adults and the faculty members and...
Carrie, just would you repeat the question, just to make sure I've got all components of it?
So, the question says, "What Should Ketchikan Do To Strengthen Abuse Prevention And Responses To Accusations Of Abuse?"
Well, in my understanding of the things that have happened in the school district, abuse is an issue. I do believe we're working very hard on policy issues. But policies are only as good as, as well as useful as far as they're enforced. I believe there needs to be a relationship between the faculty and the parents to work together to support this, to be able to have zero tolerance in these areas. If there's issues of sexual impropriety and things like that, yes, quite to Kathleen's point, there is a mandate, a statute that we need to report these things and do it in a timely manner. So, we need to be compliant and working to make sure we are achieving that and not allow things to fall through the cracks. But I do believe that parents and teacher educators need to work together to be able to enforce zero tolerance with their kids and to be able to support disciplinary action, regardless of where it may be a point of embarrassment for someone. But some, I remember when bullying was going on in my time. It was, if you were shamed and embarrassed, you probably didn't do it again. So, we need to kind of raise the bar in that area.
Well, I work for the Forest Service, and we're going through kind of a national program right now to take on abuse problems and victims that are within our organization. And I'm part of that, and I believe in the steps that they're taking, which are to very much focus on the victims. And what I mean is, first, you have to take all accusations seriously. You really need to set a culture, the school board across the schools, that all accusations of abuse are taken seriously so that victims know that their accusations will be taken into account. And second, you need to empower those victims through education. What I mean by that is they need to understand where they can go to get help. And there needs to be multiple avenues of that. Because if you only have one reporting site, they may be uncomfortable with that reporting site. And then they're gonna stay quiet, and that is a huge problem when it comes to abuse, is it simply not being reported, or the victims not being comfortable with reporting. So, it needs to be a big focus on that and educating our students specifically, that who they can talk to and where they can report those situations. And then, when we have those incidents, when we have accusations, when those incidents happen, it's also very important that there's an independent and evidence-based investigation that goes on to get those results. And whatever the result of that investigation is, that process has to be followed, and decisions on those accusations should be based on that process.
Okay, thank you very much. So now, we're gonna come back to Hillary again for the first answer on this question, which is, "What Do You See As The Value And Strength Of A Public School System To A Community?"
I'm so sorry. Alright, it's empowering. I'm sorry, can you do the last one?
"What Do You See As The Value And Strength Of A Public School System To A Community?"
It's like the biggest part of our community. I mean, look where we all are right now. Like, how did we get here? Our education, and some of it might have been harder than others. And there's people here trying to fight for change for that, you know? So, I feel like it is probably the biggest thing in this community. I feel like the value is... I don't really have a word for it, but I just, I'm so grateful for like the education that I did receive and how I can think about how the education for my children and for me running right now, that is the value I give to this community, is to have a say, to want change, to want to be able to be a part of this, this big thing in our community. So, I feel like the value is endless. I mean, I just want to acknowledge that everybody has had their education, whether, you know, it was great for them or not. But being involved is probably the biggest value I can give to the community.
Okay, repeat it one more time, Carrie?
"What Do You See As The Value And Strength Of A Public School System To A Community?"
Well, as I stated earlier in my little one-minute scenario here, is I firmly believe, I firmly believe that public education is the most important and precious seed that we can sow as a community into the lives of our children. I honestly believe that. I believe it's our duty to actively engage in supporting the development of our kids, to guide them into being prepared, well-rounded, contributing adults who will carry out our legacy. That is the value of public education. Now, we can debate whether the curriculum is right or whatever, but we, if we're committed to driving economic, excuse me, educational excellence, we can work on the curriculum. We can structure things. There are core values that need to be taught. People need to be prepared to succeed in life. Math reading, instructional skills, all of those kinds of things. Not everyone is going on into higher education. Not everyone is gonna be a PhD. Most people in the United States work somehow with their hands. We need to be able to support educational tools and ability for people to be able to compete in our economic opportunities across the land. in our economic opportunities across the land. That's our value.
Well, the value of our education system is it's the greatest possible investment society can make. So the value is immeasurable to society. Now, the strength of a public school is that public schools, the stakeholders of a public school is everyone, as opposed to a private school where the stakeholders are just their direct investors and the parents and children of that, of that school. With a public school, your, your stakeholders are every business and every person in that community. And that's important to that support system. A public school is also a very important option for parents to have. Because ultimately, parents are the decision-makers for the education of their children and should be in charge of that. And it's important for them to have the options for their education, whether it's a public school, whether it's a charter school, whether it's a private school or whether it's homeschool. Every child is different. Every family situation is different. And it's important to have all of those options. And public schools are a very important option for parents in making that decision. And. And that, that actually wraps it up.
Well, of course, public education is important to our community and to our future. But there are other ways to be educated, such as I was talking about earlier and Betsy DeVos was just talking about public partner, public-private partnerships and merging homeschool, private school and public schools. I support vouchers. I think the voucher should follow the child so that that child can go to any school that he or she chooses or actually the parents choose. That's not what's going on right now, but that would definitely improve the quality of our educational system. Of course, the argument is, is that all the advanced kids are going to go to private schools and all the special ed kids are going to be left in the public schools. But that's not always the case. That's not always how it works. And if private schools are going to take special ed kids, then they darn well better, they better take everybody if they're taking the money, is my point. So, thanks.
All right, so Leslie, we're going to go ahead and start off with you on this one. Some voices, including the governor and certain members of the legislature, have indicated that K-12 education should be made more efficient or otherwise overhauled. What opportunities, if any, do you see for doing this? What will you personally do in this situation?
Well, this goes, smacks right into the face of curriculum. And what is the curriculum that is being supported in our community? And I am not an expert on exactly what is in our, in our entire curriculum. I know there are some new things that have been brought to the table this year that will be, to my pleasure, being measured through a pre-testing, midterm testing and post-testing tracking system, which I think will be very valuable to assess the benefit of the curriculum. What I don't know is where the curriculums have been used in other school districts and how successful they have been. But I do believe that we need to measure our test results. We need to get on a, a tracking perspective to understand how we are measuring the core things that people need to use to compete in economic opportunities after they have graduated from high school. And if there's superfluous things that are being required in their curriculum, perhaps they need to be revisited and eliminated. Or I'm so there, so the, the core things for competition are available and supported through the system.
Well, any program, if, if you take a close enough look, is going to need to be improved. And I think we can all agree when we look at the, the performance of Alaska to other states and we look at just the performance of United States education nationwide, there's tons of room for improvement. One of the ways I think we can move towards improving our children's education is to not force our teachers to teach most of their time towards a standardized test and actually teach more of the curriculum, give our teachers more flexibility in the classroom. One of the biggest problems facing our education system today is class size, the amount of children per teacher. And that's, that is a big ask and fighting past that one because that is a big budget issue as well and, and qualified teachers. And, but to be honest, it's probably one of the biggest ones. Between standardized testing and the, the number of, number of kids per teacher are, are huge obstacles that our teachers face. So absolutely, I would agree that our education needs an overhaul. I think most of our teachers would agree that our education needs an overhaul. The important thing is, if we're going to do that overhaul, that those teachers are at the table and the parents are at the table. And that we're using a process that not only involves all of the important stakeholders of that process, but that actually also takes into account sufficient data. Research needs to be done on the best possible way to implement a program and then we need to move towards that.
Could you please repeat the question again?
Absolutely. Some voices, including the governor and certain members of the legislature, have indicated that K-12 education should be made more efficient or otherwise overhauled. What opportunities, if any, do you see for doing this? What will you personally do in this situation?
Well, I've already talked about public-private partnerships and the voucher program. But one of the things that's always been held up as a model for us is Finland. They're like so far ahead. Their kids just do so well. And what do the Finnish people do? They do not put their kids in school until they're seven years old. When you look at early preschool for, I'm talking like non-special ed kids. For special ed kids, you're going to have to have preschool, right? But it's really just a daycare. I mean, preschool is really just a daycare. Head Start's own studies show that people who go through Head Start have significant academic gains until like third grade and then it all just drops off, you know? So preschool actually increases aggression in kids. A Harvard study showed that it does increase aggression in children. So I would just wait until kids are like seven to send them to school because they're more ready to learn. You know, right now, our school system is like a daycare, you know? Why are we turning our kids over to the state to let the state rear our children? I mean, think about it. Don't you want to inculcate your own values into your children? There's a lot of problems in our society today and this is maybe one of them, substandard education. Another problem is testing, testing, testing. I've been in many schools where we have these nationally normed tests and the state normed tests and the kids just click their way through them. This click, 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 see, see, see. There's no incentive for them to do their best on the test. So the tests, even though we spent thousands of dollars on all these tests, do not accurately show the education of the students. We should not be tying the test scores to teacher salaries either, nor the evaluations. That did come up. And I don't support that because there's a lot of, lot of moving parts in education and testing is just one of them.
Thank you. You want the question one more time?
Please.
Absolutely. Some voices, including the governor and certain members of the legislature, have indicated that K-12 education should be made more efficient or otherwise overhauled. What opportunities, if any, do you see for doing this? What will you personally do in this situation?
I would like to see some backup with their questions for efficiency. Can we start some, you know, maybe as a small community, put our, our input with this? Ask them if they would like us to start measuring however they want to do it. I think that as a student of Ketchikan Charter School when I was younger, they have an amazing curriculum. I also put my daughter in there. They have such an amazing curriculum. And I've been to several different schools here and I was a little questionable because of the curriculum. And as I look back and I'm able to compare it to now with my daughter, they have actually stepped up a lot to how the children are learning certain things. And, you know, maybe that might be something that we could put our, serving, I'd like to say, for this issue. I believe that just as a whole community, inputting that and fighting for the research, just being able to ask for the facts before they decide to overhaul us and not give all of these kids a chance.
We started Wiki, Leslie, didn't we?
Yes, we did.
Okay, I'm losing track here. We only have a few minutes left, so rather than go through any more of the questions, I would like to offer each candidate a chance to do a two-minute closing statement. So again, our two minutes, Morgan's got us timed here. And we're going to go backwards this time. So Kathleen, if you would like to start us off with a two-minute closing statement.
Well, I would just like to see more inculcation of resiliency in kids in school. And that is allowing students to fail and allowing them to recover from that failure. And less extracurricular programs like the Kanayama and all that stuff, we don't need that. We need the basics, the reading, the writing, the arithmetic. And I think that writing and thinking are reciprocal and integral processes. And so that is one way to not only get to know your subject matter, but to get to know yourself. And in closing, I just would like to say that I am going to put my vote for Hillary. Thank you so much.
Well, thanks, everybody, for being here and, and allowing me to present myself for this, for this board seat. I think we have some fantastic candidates and I'm excited to be running alongside them. I don't have any grand agenda. I don't have any personal goals I want to see out of this school board. Because I believe that my role as a school board member is just to be a member of the team, to take in the data that is presented to us, do some additional research, accept the input from the public that come to those meetings, which I hope we see a lot more public coming to those meetings. I've watched a few of the meetings and it's, it's usually just a handful of teachers. And I hope we get more parents and more participation in there. But that public input is essential to making sure that the school board makes the decisions that are best for our kids. You've got to have the data, the research and public input. We need to hear from parents. We need to hear from teachers. We need to hear from everyone. So that would be my role on the school board and I would be honored to fill that role for you.
So I have to agree with what was just sent by the gentleman to my left, Mr. Robbins. I don't have a grand agenda here. It's an honor to be here in this community. It's an honor to serve. And, and I think that education is our biggest, most important legacy. We have to protect this. And it may not be all hitting on all cylinders right now the way people would like it to be, but the community needs to be involved. I would encourage the parents to come out, to work with the teachers. If we need to do some tough work and we need to dig in, we need to be willing to do that. We need to pull back the veil and look at what's in there. If the baby's ugly, the baby's ugly. We've got to fix it. You know, I don't mean to be rude in anything I'm saying. I'm just saying we've got to look at things and be able to look at the reality of where we are, to measure things. I do believe in pilot programs and I think there's opportunities to, to pilot some different things. Because we don't want to make a curriculum change all the way across the board if there's going to be a failure. But there is opportunities to look at ed segments of the, of the students and see where we can do a better job and raise the bar. So yes, it does need to be resurfaced. It needs to be evaluated. The budget needs to be managed more effectively. And I am willing to continue to take, to invest my personal time for the next year to be able to vet that out and support that with the entire team. So thank you.
So as my closing statement, I would like to thank everybody not only here, but the candidates who decided to put their, you know, their life into this right now. Like, this is taking up moments, you know, that we are really important to the community right now. And it's going to be really important when they vote. I would just like to express gratitude to be able to be running. I feel, I feel as if I'm a very young candidate and I get that. But my goal in running is really just to be transparent, bring the community together. I feel like I have a lot of goals with the community. I, like I said, multiple jobs for years that I've just flourished in being able to, you know, put advocacy out there, resources. I work as an employment support specialist at KIC. I do not represent the tribe, but I do have the resources. I know the resources and I know there's resources out there for not only the tribal members, but you know, people of all walks of life. And I believe that everybody deserves a chance, no matter where they're coming from. And I just really would like to see our generation out here being involved. I have never ran for anything for public office, so this is very new to me. And I, I understand it might be a little questionable for people who are voting, but I would like to see somebody just really out there who wants to be a part of something bigger than themselves. Like, this is me giving my time to the community, involving my children and my life to serve as the, on the school board. So I, I hope that you guys go out and vote.
Okay, well, that's going to go ahead and conclude our forum for our school board candidates. Thank you all so much for being here. And as Hillary said, thank you for investing the time and efforts into our community. So I wish you all good luck. Can we get them a round of applause, please? All right. Thank you.